Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Sizomarsky.
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor Police.
Here. Declare Coram present, please stand, join in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wasn't about to experiment.
Before we get started, I just want to give our condolences on behalf of this city to, for the Maher family, for Ronald Maher, who passed away this week. Been in business here for over 55 years. So, just a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Need a motion to approve the City Council minutes of August 16th.
Move second.
Any comments, questions, or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Yes, sir. Not on. Okay. I do have one written communique. And it comes straight from the heart. Thank you for sponsoring the beautify Wooddale contest. A longtime resident of Wooddale, thank you for the winner gift, Sally Franz. Under Mayor's report, we've got one item, two items, but one item for you guys. Trunk or treat Halloween event. This was something that Grant, unfortunately, he's not here tonight because it's his birthday. Happy birthday to Grant. He called the Special Events Committee members. He called us each and everybody seemed like it was a good idea. It's pretty self-explanatory. The money comes from the money that was saved from the fireworks, unless we have a problem. Anybody want to make comment? Yes, no? Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
Mayor, doesn't the church down on the corner there do the same thing? Are we merging it together across from Park District building? I thought they'd do it that.
I'm not sure, but when Grant comes back. I know he called, who was it, the parent-teacher organization? And they would do it over at where we had the farmer's market. Honestly.
I don't care.
The Prairie Fest meeting, committee is next week. So, he called us and asked us if we thought it was a good idea. I thought, hey, something for the kids. It's nice. We have the money. I think. Hold on a second. Would you like to be recognized? You have to go to the microphone. You have to go to, have to go to the microphone. I'm sorry.
State your name, please.
Mary Beth Liscano. I live right across the street from Calvary. And every year, they do have the trunk-or-treat for Halloween, and it is a huge hit. And it's just kind of nice because a couple dozen members of that church will park in the parking lot. They'll open their trunk and pass out candy to the kids. And it's really nice because it's all in one location. It's a safe area. And the kids can hit a number of.
Right.
Cars at one time. So, I think it's a great idea.
Okay. So, now they would have a second location. Okay. All right. All right. Anything else on that? Okay, I have a couple other items. Something, actually, my wife received a comment from a resident. I guess they work in Elk Grove or something, and they said Elk Grove is putting up another Woodfield Mall. It's on the website. It's on the website. So, I went on the website just to see what's going on. And it's their TIF districts and Route 83 and whatnot. But as I went through their website, I saw something that they have, which I thought was pretty nice. They had a section called rumor versus fact on their website. I spoke to the manager, and unless you guys have no objections, we can put some items that people are hearing, some certain things, like we're out of money, where we actually have nine months of cash. I mean, we can put some of these things on the website. Unless we have some objections, the manager will look into it.
I'm all about transparency, Sheriff.
Right. Okay. And then part of the strategic planning. We spoke about having a possible coffee with the council on a Saturday here. A number of days was never, you know, two, three a year or something. It was never brought up. Staff has reached out. We're thinking sometime in late October, the last two Saturdays in October before Halloween. And I don't know how you guys feel about that. We need some feedback so we can set that up. Alderman Messina?
Yeah. So, Alderman Jacob and myself have our scheduled ward meeting. It hasn't been publicized yet, but it'll be possibly October 13th. So, that may.
Adaptize now.
Yeah. It may draw attendance either away from ours or from yours.
Basically, the way these coffees I heard are run, basically, people come up, they ask questions, and the council sits there. It's not like we're giving a presentation. The presentation, you know, that's not, it's more of, they have questions. They come up and ask all the questions we want. We supply the coffee. Alderman Woods, you have a. Alderman Jacob.
I was just gonna say, could we not do that on that date?
Well, then, we need to give some feedback to the staff. I mean, this was strategic planning. They're bringing it forward. So, we haven't, there's no date set.
Okay. We'll talk, we'll talk to Jeff about it.
We need some feedback from the council.
We'll talk to the city manager. Thank you.
Because it was brought up that strategic planning.
Which was last year. Took nine months to put together.
It's taken a little time, I guess. Next. That concludes my report. City manager, Mr. Murmice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple items. First reminder, there is no council meeting on Thursday, September 20th, due to the IML conference. Second item, Dr. John Corbett from School District 7 has been in touch with me, and he asked me to share some good information with the council. A lot of you probably already know, but School District 7 did receive a grant from Kaboom. It's a national not-for-profit organization that supports play for children through providing grants to help communities update or build new playgrounds. They found out about this in August. And Kaboom has already been on site to meet with students, staff, and parents to get input on the design of the playground. It looks like they're coming out with volunteers on October 4th. And what School District 7 is asking is if the city would be interested in sending volunteers to help and/or contributing some of the 10% local community match for the park. So, the park is valued at $85,000. And Kaboom likes a community match of 10%. I do know the Wooddale Education Foundation has already agreed to do $2,000. And I know some parent groups are also raising money. So, Dr. Corbett asked if I would bring this up and make everybody aware of the date for volunteerism, and also if the council was interested in providing any monetary amount.
Well, it's not on the agenda, so.
Correct. But are we interested in putting it on the next agenda? I told him it wouldn't be officially on an agenda until the next meeting on October 4th, and he said, okay.
Okay, we have one. We have a second.
Is there an amount that I can put on the agenda?
Well, that can be discussed at night.
Okay. And then I had one last item from the manager's report. Chief Festa is going to talk a little bit about a grant that the police department just received.
Yeah, I just wanted to update everyone that we again were awarded a IDOT step enforcement grant for the next October 1st to September 30th. We got similar funding as last year, about $38,000 again. And those grant periods, those enforcement periods usually revolve around the holidays, such as Christmas, New Year's, 4th of July, Memorial Day, Labor Day campaigns. It's two-week campaigns. And what they cover is extra patrol enforcement for four things. One is DUIs, child safe, child passenger safety, so car seats, seat belts, and distracted driving. And that's what the focus of the patrol officers who sign up to work the extra details do. IDOT covers 100% of our overtime rate for that, and they also cover mileage and wear and tear on our cars. So, it's a zero, there's no matching funds that we have to do. But this is the several years in a row now we've gotten this grant, so we're renewed for next year.
Thank you.
This one for the chief. The skunk program, is that on here, John?
Alderman Sizomarsky, what program?
The skunk program. I have residents asking, they were told that the chief, that it was taken off.
We extended it.
They were told it was abolished.
Chief?
No, actually, we did extend it, and we had an extremely busy August with the skunk program. So, we're at the point of a timeout at this point, too. And we're going to have to reapproach council.
A second?
Yeah. Yeah. We're with it, I believe with it being advertised in the city newsletter, we just received an invoice for a substantial amount of money that I'm working through with the owner to verify all the expenses. But we told them at this time, don't do any new programs until we see where this goes, and council's going to have to give direction on that. So, that was just developing today, actually.
Could you just get a follow-up?
All right. So, Jeff's going to talk to you about.
Yeah, we were just talking today about it.
No, there's no. All right.
Can you make sure that they check for, see if they're going to have to pay the $25 again if they didn't once? That's what they're asking, so.
For every skunk, I believe it's $25. So, if they catch two, resident pays $50 or $25?
No, they just pay per deployment. So, once it's put out there. Yeah. So, they don't recharge every time, every time they come out and remove another skunk, so.
Okay. So, if they catch two skunks, it's still $25 to the resident? Okay, correct. Good. Alderman Woods, it's not on the agenda, though. All right. Next, committee chairman reports. Oh, take that back. Consent agenda, right. Nothing on the consent agenda. Committee chairman reports, planning and zoning.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety, Alderman Sorrentino.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public works, Alderman Sizomarsky.
Mayor, I have two. There's a resolution seeking approval of a contract between the City of Wooddale and ALAMP Concrete Construction, Incorporated, for the fiscal year 2019 road project and not exceed amount of $648,895.75. That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any questions? Alderman Wesley.
If this is approved tonight, when is the start date on this project?
Mr. York.
Well, we will get in contact with ALAMP immediately. Probably do notice proceed sometime next week, once contract language is all, all the contracts are signed by ALAMP. And then we'll get those contracts back to the mayor to sign off on. Probably towards the end of the month, I would think, we should be able to get started. The contract, the date for completion, I believe, is the, is the Friday before Thanksgiving. So, it'll all be done by then.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizomarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes.
Second, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wooddale and Newcastle Electric Company for the Potter Street Generator Electric Project and not exceed amount of $75,500. That is my motion.
Second.
Sonny was first, so second, my sonny. Any questions on this? Roll call, please.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizomarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes.
Second, continues my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance and administration, Alderman Messina.
Yes, I have one report. One report that would need a motion to approve revised IGA terms for a resolution seeking to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wooddale and the Wooddale Park District for redevelopment of White Oaks Park, Wooddale, Illinois.
There was your motion.
That is, I am not making a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Who's making the motion?
Art. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Burley, did you, was this the subject you wanted to speak? Go ahead, sure. Definitely. No.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is John Burley. I live adjacent to the, to the park that is being talked about and discussed tonight. Me and my family have lived on Murray Drive for 29 years and, you know, enjoyed living next to White Oaks. There's always been some good family-type orientated activities in there. But there hasn't been much money spent in there in a lot of years. And we're really happy to see this beautiful plan that the Park District has put together to make improvements there. To us, it looks like this will make that park a marquee destination for the community. You all know that now with the dog park there, we are even getting, you know, visitors from outside of the community. They're coming in our community, spending money in our community. We fully support the project and your funding of it because I think it's a good cause. You've been on a good roll of great improvements in Wooddale. You're making it a nice place to live, work, and play. We enjoy living here, and we just think that this would be a very nice amenity to build out according to the plan that the Park District just put together. So, we ask your support of the resolution tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
I had a statement, but did you want to take questions from the audience still?
No, no. Okay. If you want to speak, go ahead.
And if one person gets to speak, issue all of their opportunity.
Well, he told me, he said it earlier.
Hi, I'm Mary Castiello, and I live by White Oaks Park.
Could you repeat your name, please?
Mary Castiello. And I'm just speaking for myself. I'm not speaking for any group or anything like that. But I just want you all to know, everybody, this is just not our ward that we want to develop this White Oaks Park. It's for everybody. It's for the whole Wooddale. And let me preface that, okay, if I say Elk Grove Village, what's the first thing that comes to mind is Bussy Woods. We're not Bussy Woods, but it's still a beautiful area that I think most communities would love to have. And we can develop it. We can make it great, you know, and something that, like, we're putting up 66 apartment, you know, apartments in the next couple of years. And what a great thing to have on the brochure that people can go and, you know, there's a nature center within walking distance. So, I think the Park District did a great job of going back and revamping it. And it's exactly kind of what we all wanted for the community. So, I'm also asking if you guys support this for us, for the whole community, not just for our ward, not just for the people around that park. I think the ideas what they have is just awesome, and it's exactly what everybody was asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
Yeah. So, Mayor, I just want to make a few comments regarding the proposed changes to the agreement made by the, by the Park District Board. So, for those that read the agreement, we had, we had done this agreement for the board. It was submitted to Director Elman and his board to review. And then, obviously, what we're looking at tonight is what they have come back with. Couple points. From the beginning, the city has been more than willing to consider collaborating. We all, many of us sat in this room and went back and forth, and they have done a great job of revising. But the revised terms, they're not what we as a city council endorsed or approved initially upfront. And then sadly, what started as a discussion has now morphed into what I consider at some points a heated debate and what some would consider a negotiation. And personally, I'm a little disappointed that our inability to financially fund the project 100%, so we're still giving money, but giving a third of what we had asked for is being, what many of us feel, held against us. And people talk in this community quite a bit, so it always comes back. We always hear it. So, I thought to myself, what is this an example of? We are offering money. They are a taxing body of their own. And I thought to myself, maybe I'll direct it to Director Elman. Did you ever yell at your grandma when she handed you an envelope on your birthday with only $10 in it? No. It's all she could afford, but she sure did care about you, right? You guys came to us for help, and we offered help. And now I just feel like we're getting bashed because we financially cannot afford to give you all of it. We're 100% willing to collaborate. And I just see this proposed in the same way as that analogy. In my opinion, no one's entitled to any financial support from the city. Just like you, we have to raise our own tax dollars, and we're always pressured to live within our means and oftentimes forcing us to make tough financial decisions. In addition, and I said this in the beginning when this was brought up to us, this request, we have, for everybody in here, we have two other park districts that serve the city of Wooddale. And in particular, the majority of mine, Alderman Jacob's residents, pay taxes into Bensonville Park District as well as the City of Wooddale. And I'm not boasting, I'm not saying, but we are the biggest tax base into this city, our ward. And to hear horror stories of people that have to go to Bensonville Park District and that we're going to use their dollars to fund this is a little scary. We're willing to help, and we've offered help. But what's to stop these other park districts, or heck, even other libraries districts? Because remember, where we live, our folks are going to Bensonville Libraries as well and Bensonville Parks from coming to us for help next. So, the saddest part is you're asking for the same residents' city tax dollars to help fund 100% your project, even though you continue to, and this is not pointed at anybody, but the Park District continues to hammer these same residents with out-of-district costs when they want to use your facilities. Facilities that technically are located in your town. How is that fair? How do I tell my neighbor who pays $14,000 that she cannot use the Wooddale facility? She has to use the Bensonville facilities. And if her and her husband want to come there, they can't. And I'm sorry, Director Elman, I've asked you multiple times to collaborate with Bensonville Park District, as has Alderman Jacob. Not taking it out on you, but today I have to. Because I've asked you multiple times to collaborate, and nothing has been done. You know, in these type times, and we're all feeling the heat with all these other taxing bodies, we have the most taxing bodies in the country. How I cannot get Bensonville Park District and Wooddale Park District in a room to share? We're talking 40 residents that back and forth could just use each other's facilities. Do you guys really need the extra $200 a year or $500 a year to beat up our residents that are already paying $13,000 a year? So, in closing, as the finance chairman, I would be remiss not to remind everyone that we are not playing with monopoly money. I want to be good neighbors, so I am okay with giving you our revised financial commitment of $500,000 upfront, since we already budgeted for it in our CIP. And I remind you, we're one of the most fiscally responsible taxing bodies in DuPage County. So, we're smart on what we do. However, due to the other unexpected financial obligations that I know staff has mentioned multiple times to the Park District, I personally, I can't speak for the rest, but I cannot commit to the rest of that money. Otherwise, and I know staff has mentioned this to you before, Matt, come back with an alternate game plan that provides us, those homeowners that somehow managed to sweat and pay 13 grand a year to go to Bensonville Parks and Libraries and all that, somehow provides something tangible in exchange for more financial support. So, thanks for hearing, thanks for hearing my comments and concerns.
Alderman Jacob.
Just a comment similar. Yeah, we have a joint Park District Committee with the city. And I've been asking, we have residents in Ward 1 that belong to Bensonville Park District. There's a piece of property. We've asked the Wooddale Park District to join in with Bensonville Park District to do something. It's not, it's not a huge lot. We're talking maybe a $50,000 to $60,000 project, which would mean $30,000 to Wooddale. And one of the board members basically said, well, that's not, that's Bensonville Park District. They don't pay into Wooddale Park District. But yet, you're asking those taxpayers, which again, are the biggest taxpayers in the city of Wooddale, to give money to the Wooddale Park District. It can't be both ways. I mean, if you guys want the support, then you guys have to support those residents. We've gone to Bensonville Park District and asked for things. They've come back and helped us. But we don't seem to be getting that from the Wooddale Park District. Thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
You know, the same problem is on the other side of town that you have two school districts and three school districts. You've got Addison Park District, Atasca Park District overlapping. If you want to change that, put a referendum out there about changing boundary lines. I don't know if it could be done at the city level or where it could be done. That's a pound-on question.
Guys, hold on.
It's not going to happen, but.
Hold on. Randy. Do you want to? Okay. Any other questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
The only drawback I have on this is we had reached the Park District, and we had asked about certain pieces of land that we may need for the city. And all I do is get, you know, we don't know. I mean, we got somewhat, but you haven't came forward and tell us how much you want for the land or anything like that. The other drawback I have on this project is, again, I'm in favor of helping our money that we offer, but to come back with a different plan and this thing come, I only think this came to our committee. It went right to council for this approval. I think this should have went to committee to discuss this and then make agreement with it. I don't think it should have went right to council. And I understand, I understand with the agreement, there's also attached to this, we only have to give them the money if they get their, they apply for the grant and they get their grant money. I totally understand that. For us to sit up here and tie up our budget for two years down the line, knowing that we don't know if you're going to get the grant money situation. So, what happens if the grant money, you don't get the grant. So, are you killing the project? That wasn't addressed. I mean, if you don't get the grant money and you don't get this money, does that mean you're killing the project? I just don't know where that, in the memo, that didn't say that either, so. The other part of this money was based on if you apply for the grant and you get the grant, that we would give you the rest of the money. The point is, if you don't get the grant, it wasn't addressed in here. Project done or not done? That's the problem I have with it.
Alderman Woods.
Yeah. All very good points. Certainly, that's been an issue, as Alderman Wesley brought up, school districts, there's three or four. The Park District's the same, same thing. All the points that the Alderman brought up are true. They're correct. But we have to start somewhere, right? So, everybody goes, well, I want some. I want some. And then usually, nothing happens because nobody can agree. There has to be always a step one. And this is the step one, right? This is still Wooddale. We still represent Wooddale, and we're still trying to beautify Wooddale. If a program in Ward 1 with a park can be put together, there is a joint board setup, then we could work towards that. I can't solve all those, or we can't solve all those this evening. But we did agree to do a joint venture with the Park District and the beauty of. And the beauty of friendly discourse is, we've changed the plan from what it was originally. It was a little more robust, a little further reaching. That got scaled back. Dollars got scaled back when they looked at their budget and still looked at timeframes to try to get this done. They said they needed some more money to make it work, and part of that was how the grant funding works, and that they need money, or the commitment for money, to be able to apply for the grant. So that's step two and three. And so to answer the other aldermen's questions, they can't be answered until we can answer this one, really. So that's the big reason that I'm for it, and even though it increased the money, this is going to be a beautiful project for Wooddale moving forward. I think it complies with what the people around the area were looking for, right? It's not the big noisy thing, but it will approve the amenities that were over there, and add some more that don't exist. And that's what we're all about, and that's what we're looking for. Given that we've got new developments coming in, building, you know, 160 apartments. You've got the new gas station stuff going on. You've got businesses beautifying. There's other things happening. This is just one of those things. So I'm not ruling out or arguing that those other things don't come into play. We just can't solve them all today. I'm open to doing a project or trying to get that done, and I think other people up here are too. So I just wanted to put that in perspective. Thank you.
And I'm just going to add on to that. So basically, this piece of property is on Wooddale Road. And the other park districts really don't have properties sitting right on Wooddale Road, entryway, or Irving Park that can be beautified. This one is, needs work. It hasn't been taken care of. Park District's taking the initiative. Basically, we already said we're going to, we said $500,000, which is in the contract. They're also looking for the extra $400,000, which is a match for a grant. If they don't get the grant, then that's not for, they're not going to get the 400. So things would be scaled back, my understanding. If the grant is less than $800,000, or whatever the number is, then it would be, the match would be less, if I understood correctly. And I understand, I know we're getting heat on both sides of town, this park district, that park district. But they don't have a piece of property sitting right there at the entryway on Wooddale Road. And they're not working with us on future developments for the future of the city up north. We shouldn't move forward with this project. Alderman Sina, you had your hand up.
Yeah, you make a valid point, but I actually disagree with you. Because Bensonville Park District does have a plot of land right on Wooddale Road. That is undeveloped.
Which is wetlands.
Which is wetlands, but it's still land, right, that we could use. There's other ones. And again, to be very clear, it's not that I am against, and I don't think anybody up here is against the money. It's a matter of how much, right? So I guess, one question I had, 500Ks, 500K, if we were to give the $500,000 upfront, does that allow them to apply for the grant? Maybe that's a Brad question or a Matt question.
I believe not. Mr. Elman, did you want to comment on that? Could you? Because the $500,000s to start Phase 1, the $400,000s for the grants...
Yeah, if they have the 500K up front on that commitment, that gets them...
Go ahead, Mr. Elman.
Thank you, Mayor. Matthew Elman, representing Wooddale Park District. It is true that without a pledge of the funding, we would not be in a financial position to apply for the grant in the current funding cycle, which closes on October 1st. Whether or not we could apply in future years would be based on, obviously, where numbers fall, funding falls, and decisions of the board. The grant program was suspended for two years. This is the heaviest funding amount in the history of the grant. And whether it continues is really a matter of state government, and as we all know, state government is suspect year after year. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up, Alderman Sina? Did that answer your question?
Yeah, well, you mentioned the current funding cycles. When does that current funding cycle end?
For the what?
You mentioned that. It wouldn't be possible under the current funding cycle.
You have to have the application in by October 1st.
When would that reopen?
Well, it hasn't been open for a couple of years, so...
Up until this year.
Right, so, and there's capital projects also going on for us as well, which we're also submitting projects as well. Alderman Sorrentino, go ahead.
I would like some assurances from either the park district or whoever would be responsible to give me a, as part of the public health, a clean bill of health on the current park district and the complaint of mold. So I have not yet been given any assurances that there is a mold problem or not. We addressed the swimming pool that needed work. That's supposed to be taken care of. We talked about this retention pan behind the building, but the mold has not been addressed.
Mold where?
In the building, the park district, current park district building on Edison or Wooddale Road.
I haven't heard about any mold.
Have you been told or heard of anything about mold?
The cabin, I think is what he's talking about. Talking about the cabin?
No, talking about the current park district.
Sonny, hold on. One at a time.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Go ahead, Mr. Elman.
No mold issue has been brought to my attention, so I'm not familiar with what you're speaking of. I've not had any correspondence or conversations with anybody that I can recall regarding that. Obviously, we take environmental matters very seriously. Just as an example, when we heard about some of the things occurring in the Chicago Park system with the drinking fountains, we wanted to actively inspection review from a third party, and had all our drinking fountains in the rec center evaluated, and they came back with a clean bill of health. But this is the first time I've ever heard of this.
Thank you.
Myself as well. That's why I was curious, and...
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wesley, you are next. Roy Wesley had his hand up first.
When we had the discussion a long time ago about this, it was coming out of the hotel tax. Does it still come out of hotel tax?
Mr. Wilson.
When we... Because it's not supposed to come out of...
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The way the CIP was constructed for this fiscal year, and then as presented for the subsequent two fiscal years, was 20% of it, so $100,000 was going to come out of the tourism fund, and the other $400,000, $400,000 was going to come out of the general capital projects. So it was a split, but... Because the tourism fund couldn't absorb the entire burden of that, so it was like an 80/20 split between the CIP and the tourism fund.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
When we originally talked about this plan with the zip line and everything else, I thought it was coming out of tours, and that was a discussion about it.
No, it was never, we never make enough money on the...
So we're 80, well, it's over years.
Yeah.
So 20% out of tours and 80% out of general?
No, capital. Mr. Wilson, go ahead.
The general capital of Fund 41, 80/20, correct, yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So again, the follow-up I have, the question is, what about the property that we were looking into up by the ball dimes? What is the status on that?
I'll answer that one. So the joint meeting met about a month ago, not even three weeks, two weeks, two and a half weeks. We received a list from the park district, and next week, we have a workshop that will show the entire wish list from the park district and of what they need to compensate for those ball fields. We can't just take ball fields and tennis courts. I mean, a lot of it's the parking lot and tennis courts, but we need to replace that stuff, and how to replace that stuff. It's all on the list. Next week's the workshop. Come ready to work. We're going to roll your sleeves up. And then we're going to go back to the park district and have our meeting with them, and we will work that stuff out. Go ahead, follow-up.
And I totally understand that, Mayor, but the point is, we are making the decision tonight to give them additional money, and now we have a workshop? I mean, the workshop should have been, this year went to committee.
We just received the list three weeks ago. We've been waiting for the list, right? They did all their assessments. They did everything that we asked them to do. They brought the list. If they weren't serious about emptying out a parking, most of it's parking lot and tennis courts, and then some of the ball field. If they weren't serious, they wouldn't have wasted all their time making an assessment. I think they want to go forward with the project. But now it's our turn to look over the list and have those discussions with them. I mean, it's hard to lump everything all together at one time. We've got so many projects going on at one time. We don't even have enough staff. Alderman Jacobs, go ahead.
Okay, I guess, my thing is, so I'm not against this project. I mean, I'm supporting the project. We're giving you $500,000, but you guys are asking us for 400, an additional $400,000 now, after we, the council, basically had to scale back. We have our own city projects that have to get done, and you're your own taxing body. You know, the only way I would support it is, yes, we do need some land, and if when we figure out the value of that land, I don't know what the value is, but let's say $1 million, we give you the $400,000, then when we have to buy that land from you, that you guys take that $400,000 off the sale price. If it's $1 million, we pay $600,000, whatever it is. Again, I don't know what the value of the land is. This way, you get your $400,000, and we get help back when we need it.
Alderman Sina, go ahead.
I know it's things you don't want to hear, Mayor, but I mean, I'm going to say, timing. I just, it's very odd, this whole project to me. And one day, when I sit down and I'm going to FOIA everything, I'm going to figure out the timing of all this stuff, because I find it very ironic. Here we are on the 6th, at a council meeting, never, skipped committee, came here. Conveniently, the next time we could get this back up here is the 20th. Oh, hey, we don't have a council meeting. And then, oh, no, October 1st is the due date. I mean, all this is so coincidental. Man, this is like a joke. And I swear to you, when I have time, I'm going to go through this project and dig and dig and dig and dig to figure this out, because I truly don't understand how all this stuff just happens to happen when it happens, and these dates come to us. We offered something. We have got nothing, not even a good faith of, give us this if we get this grant approved, like Alderman Eugene Wesley said, and then maybe we'll consider that. We're putting all our faith forward, and I'm sorry, but, I mean, in our area, we have... Unless you want to tell 3,000 homeowners that paying to Bensonville, that we're going to use their city tax dollars to give them this extra money, cool, go ahead. I don't feel comfortable unless I have a guarantee of getting a return on my investment, much like the other projects that we're doing up and down Irving, that's making this phenomenal, that you call it a great place to work, play, live, is because we're getting something in return. I don't even hear that. And so to me, all I'm asking is, we're all for it. I just feel it needs to come back. There really was no prep work. You want to play negotiation, we'll negotiate, but you need to bring something. Not a, here's, here, here's your envelope, and take it and then do what you can do. Sorry, we can't do nothing. To me, that's not fair. Another analogy, if I gave you money to say, "Go back to college," "Oh, can't go. Sorry, can't do it." No, you look for other funds, and you find a way to do it. I don't feel that's being done. I just feel like it's this ongoing negotiation of back and forth, and we've given a gift, and we've gotten no, nothing in return. Not even a promise. That's my big problem. And then these times, these dates, just really awkward how this all lines up. So I've said enough. I'd ask, if I can make a motion, can I make a motion to table this?
No, we have a motion on the floor already. If we table this, then they lose the grant. We're looking to move the city forward. I understand, I don't know, they've taken their time to go through this assessment. If they could have easily said, "No, we're not giving you any ball fields. We're not interested. We're done." And so in other words, I know there's no good faith, is what you guys are...
Can I add on something? Okay, so if I'm going to school, I'm not going to file my financial aid request. If I start in August, I'm not going to file my financial aid July 29th. I'm going to file that in February, because I need to know that I have the money to do it. That's what I'm saying. This back and forth, I don't, I don't see...
When it comes to the capital projects, hold on. Have we had a capital bill in the state for how many years? I don't know. We haven't had one. The money's coming forward. Jeff is actually emailing somebody tonight, one project, and we've got other projects that we're working with our representatives and senators. I mean, this just happened, guys. You see what's going on in Springfield. It's ridiculous. And the money, unfortunately, yeah, it looks, doesn't look right. I got it. The old saying, if it doesn't feel right, doesn't smell right, all that stuff. This is just coming through the pipeline, capital projects. State reps and senators are just starting to call and say, "Hey, we might have a capital bill. We have projects ready." We're doing our part, and basically, Jeff has to hand this one in tonight to get it on the docket, possibly, for $125,000. It just happened. We didn't get notice of weeks, months. It's happening, he's going to email it right after the meeting. I just signed it, for Christ's sake. So it's not something that's rare. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I, since I'm involved on the other committee, and I've put in a lot of time on this, no conspiracy. I have no conspiracy. This started out, I don't know when, when they came to us with the zip line thing, right? And that got put forward. People in the area came out. They complained. They didn't want it. We said, "Okay, we're not interested. Matt, go back to the drawing board." Those are the pieces back and forth, and that timeframe keeps getting shortened up into when they have to make a decision. In the meantime, they've done engineering, right, all the architectural, the design work, moving forward. I think they had a contract opening, or I don't know if you had the letting, but you got the contracts in, right? I think you delayed that, to give the okay. So everybody's sitting there. All these things have been moving, irregardless of how we feel, the timeframe's been being compressed or condensed. And I get it, there's things they don't like, but in interest of moving the city forward and the overall plan, or the old overall scope of improving the city, improving its infrastructure, improving its offerings to the residents in the community, we've argued about that all the time. The parks, the pools, the park districts, and I get the other park districts. But we, again, I can't say it enough, we have to start with a project, and this is it. And if at the end of the day, you're saying that, well, they might not deal with us on the other thing, A, shame on them, you know? I've been working with them in good faith. The mayor's been working, that group, and going back with their board. I think they're in. Do I know for sure? I don't. I can't give you a guarantee. And we can't put those things all together, because then that goes into the next thing. Then we'll try to tie in Bensonville, and we're going to be back to where we were before. Nothing gets done. Nothing got done in this community for, I've been here for 36 years. Nothing major's happened in that time. I mean, really.
Until now.
Until now. I get it. It's personal. I...
Do we have anything new here? I mean, otherwise, I'm going to call the question. You got something new, Alderman Jacobs?
Well, I want to go back to the land with the $400,000.
That's not on the table yet.
Okay.
Call it. So... You're sitting in on those meetings, so I don't know, if you feel that they're doing all that work for nothing just to give us a list, just to appease us, then, right.
Well, I, again, well, I don't, but in good faith, again, they don't have that money from us for that land that we need. So if that land's $1 million, why can't they say, "Okay, well, down the road, two years from now, whenever the city wants to buy that land, we'll give you that $400,000 back." We sat here as a board and said, "We didn't have the money to give them the 1.5 million." We decided we could give them $500,000. That's what we, as a board, decided. Now magically, they want another $400,000. Well, the money doesn't grow on trees. We have other projects here in town that we have to work on.
And the $400,000 is if they receive the grant. If they don't receive the grant, there is no $400,000. We're talking about money that may or may not go. And if we were on the opposite side and doing the same thing, I know I wouldn't be asking Jeff to do an assessment of all this stuff and have staff doing all this work, and then we're not going to go forward. That's kind of ridiculous. Do we have anything else? Otherwise, I'm calling the question.
Yeah, you do.
Yes.
Good, Alderman Wesley.
So Mayor, we just approved back in Public Works Committee, a road project that's $100,000 over budget for this year, okay? That went over, that we are going to do... $100,000 over budget for this year, okay? That went over, that we are going to do, that is higher. So $100,000 that we have to find to do this inland road project, it's over budget. We capital project for, capital project, how much was it here? Wait a minute, hang on. It went over budget. CIP budget for 550,000. We just approved it for 648,895.5. We went over budget with our own project. Now to go ahead and give money to another taxing body that we just have to find 100,000. Yeah, we got 100,000 to do a road project, but there's projects that need to be done in our own committee to give 400,000 and not have a commitment to the Park District on other issues. When's the pond going to be fixed? You know, I'm done.
Alderman Messina, go ahead.
I had one point and then had a question for the attorney. I mean, to your point, Mayor, and I wanted to address your point. What you talked about, about, well, we could ruin their project. I don't know about you, but I don't know anybody up here that would propose a project, nor would Jeff ever bring a project that would say, if you, Park District, do not give us the money, I'm putting a shotgun to you. You don't give us the money, this project's going to die. Never once would our staff ever do that. And that's what I feel is happening, is basically someone is saying, City of Wooddale, if you do not give us your taxpayer dollars, I task the Park District people, Wooddale Park District people, Bensonville Park District people, if you don't give us your city tax dollars, it's your fault this project's going to die. And it's not our fault. It's not our fault this project didn't die. It's called poor planning. When people call me in the last minute and say, I need something, I'm down, I'm out. Well, that's called poor planning. I want to help. We all want to help. No one's saying no up here. I think all I'm asking, and I don't know why there's this hesitation, but for the attorney, I would ask, can we do something where we approve it pending some type of agreement from them or some type of approval that they're going to give us something on this land? I mean, this could... So Alderman Woods talked about his experiences. You've had great experiences. No offense, I've had really crappy experiences. I've asked for two simple things. Collaborate with Bensonville Park District to make it cheaper for our residents so that when Bensonville folks come to Wooddale Park District, they get in. Wooddale Park District people want to use Bensonville facilities, cheaper. One simple ask of Director Elman. Second one, plot of land donated, donated by a builder for free, free land. Hey, guys, can you work together as a team to try to just donate a little money to Bensonville Park District so they can actually finally do something on our side of town? $13,000. Mine was $13,100 my taxes, and I have nothing. Bensonville Park District is doing nothing on our side of town. And I cannot get Wooddale Park District to collaborate. That is my problem. I can't even get them to commit to two simple tasks. How am I going to expect them to actually come through on this kind of agreement? So that's why I think we're asking the city attorneys, can we approve this subject to some type of guarantee on this land or something?
Mr. Bond?
Well, you could. It would, it would make the agreement, not an agreement. It would be a contingent agreement. So it wouldn't be advisable. You don't have the terms for the other transaction. So my answer to you would be that you could do it, but you would not leave the, this evening with an agreement. So it would be annulity essentially to this. It would basically say, we're going to negotiate another agreement or modify this to include that. So...
It would be too late.
And I'll make one final comment before I call a question. Part of the problem was, we offered 1.5, and that's what they started working with. And then we pulled it back. So we didn't help the process either. Unfortunately, we might have got a little bit ahead of our skis on that one. And should have talked it over. Call a question.
Who's the motion?
It was a motion to go with the contract, prove the IGA.
Okay, I think there's been everything else.
Yes. Alderman Sizmarzki.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Messina?
Because I see these fine people somehow worked with them to get some agreement, I will be a yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
No.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Thank you. Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Call the mayor?
Oh, you're all right.
Pass.
Yes, four, four to three. Rad Alderman.
I know, but if you'd just be quiet for five minutes, thank you. Call the mayor, don't call the mayor. Who's the boss here?
Call me. Yes. It's five to three. It's no time. I can be called. All right, that passes.
Okay, now that I'm done sweating, that completes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Other business, airport noise? Alderman Jacob?
No report, Mayor.
Stormwater commission?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Approve a list of bills, Alderman Messina.
I have one report, Mayor. List of bills dated September 6, 2018, in the amount of $538,413. That is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions?
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, we need to adjourn into executive session for land disposition and land acquisition. Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion.
Sag it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mike, Art and Mike.